There it goes.
Here we go. Here we go. All right. Virtual consent meeting ordered on the first of November 6 p.m. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting orders?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Devin is motioning, and Bill has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda, and we're going to move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. And I just don't know if Howard Robinson has ever led us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'm trying to be fair, trying to be fair. So how would you do the honors? And I'll move my screen. Don't start yet.
That's all right. Are you ready? Okay. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
For which is standing one nation under.
Invisible with liberty, justice, and.
Justice for all.
Public comments regarding items which have affected my council action. Do we have anybody on our meeting that would like to have a public comment?
I am not seeing anyone from the public right now.
Okay.
Is it bad news that it's 6:02 and Dan's already drinking a beer?
Yeah, you know I'm allergic to that stuff.
We do now, so. Okay, item number five, approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Linda moves, Ryan seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Item number six, discussion of possible action on early payoff of Black Hawk Community Credit Union note. I think this is all Dan.
Yep. Go for it.
So this is, if you guys remember back in 2018, we refinanced some debt that had been taken out sometime before it was callable then. And we're now at a position where TID 6 expenditure period is coming to an end, and we don't foresee any need for the cash at this exact moment in time. And under state law, we won't be able to spend anything other than obligations starting January of 2021. So rather than sit on cash, what we're recommending is advancing $455,000 from the general fund to the TID, with TID 6 repaying the general fund back in early January. And then we would drop off a check tomorrow at Black Hawk Credit Union to pay off the note, saving about $16,500. And a net savings to the TID of $1,500 over the next two and a half years because the TID will pay $1,500 to the general fund for that four months long.
Sounds good to me.
Well, I guess we're going to start with Bill.
Sounds very good to me.
Linda?
No questions. Sounds good.
Devin?
No questions.
Ryan?
What Bill said.
Ditto? Is this the way it's going to go tonight?
Yeah.
Larry?
Just a quick one. And Dan, I think you are on top of it, so I'm not worried. But if there'd be no reason the TID couldn't repay that money in January, correct?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Teresa?
Go for it.
All right. If there's no further questions or comments, is there a motion?
Just, just quick, or maybe this is for Dan. Is it two motions that you need based on the memo?
Yes.
Okay.
And what would that first motion be?
Authorize the early payoff of the note with Black Hawk Credit Union in the amount of $455,000 plus accrued interest.
Larry Lane has moved that, and Linda has seconded that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. And then what's the second motion?
Authorize an advance in the amount of $455,000 from the general fund to TID 6, and an interest rate of 1% that TID 6 will repay to the general fund in January of 2021.
So moved. Second.
Bill moved, Ryan seconded. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. Item number seven is review of June.
So you have a copy of everything. We had forgotten to do this last couple of months. It just kind of slipped my mind. I thought about it during the meetings, but that's too late. So here we go. We got June and July check registers, got a summary of expenditures and revenues through July. There's nothing of any major concerns from my end. And I didn't get any questions, so I'm assuming there aren't a whole lot of questions. But if there are, I'll do my best on the fly to answer them.
Okay. Teresa, any questions?
No.
Larry?
No.
Ryan?
No question.
Devin?
No questions.
Bill?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
All right, so we don't need a motion for that item. Item number eight, discussion of possible action on the development of a 2020-2024 strategic plan. Inga?
You're muted, Inga.
I know. I was trying to get the PowerPoint all set up, and it was too much. Okay. Can you guys all see the screen?
Yep.
Yes.
I'm just getting you guys all set up on my screen now, so I can see you while we're talking. Okay. So tonight, what we're going to focus on is developing goals and objectives, and then we're also going to review the mission, vision, and values. We've put a lot of work into that from the council perspective, staff perspective. Just want to take a look at that maybe one more time and then put that to the side until we're all done with the strategic plan, too. We'll take another look at it when we're set. So this is just another review of the process that we're using to develop the strategic plan. So we have the mission, vision, and values. Those are in progress, hopefully completed tonight. The strengths and major issues and challenges identification phase, we are done with. That was when we had our community workshops and employee focus groups. We met with the council. We met with department heads. Tried to get as much information as possible from all of our stakeholders and community members to identify those items. So tonight, we're moving into goals and objectives, and then at the next meeting, we'll hopefully be into strategies and actions as well. So this is just an overview of the report that I sent out, some of the high-level items. I don't know if anyone had any specific questions on it, but I just wanted to give just a high-level overview of it. And this is based, again, on all of the feedback we received from community members and staff. So the strengths that were identified was a small-town feel, hometown charm. We're a safe community. People feel safe being in our community, walking in our community. Someone during the community workshop referenced a high level of trust in our police department. And then the employee focus group also commented on how Public Works provides a safe environment as well for our community members by maintaining the streets, snow plowing, maintaining park equipment, those kinds of things. We have opportunities for economic development in our Crossroads Business Park. And we also have a very experienced city of Milton workforce. Our staff have, many of them have been with the city for 10, 20, some even 30-plus years. So we have a lot of institutional knowledge that is valued by the organization and by the community as well, which kind of ties into one of our issues-challenges, because with a high level of tenure also comes the potential for a high level of retirements. So we'll want to plan for that issue-challenge in the future and look at ways to address it. Another strength was the park system that we have in Milton and our regional outdoor recreational opportunities. So there are references to Storrs Lake and Lake Koshkennong, as well as some of our amenities in the city as well, like the splash pad and Schilberg Park and some of those other facilities we have. The school district of Milton was referenced as a strength. It's a high-performing school district, and one of the reasons that many people identified why they moved to the community and why they stayed in the community. Another strength internally in our organization is that there's quite a bit of flexibility for staff. I think departments really try and work with their staff members to be as flexible as possible so they can be high-functioning employees in their departments, but also be able to address any life needs that they may have, family obligations, those kinds of things. So trying to keep our staff here, one of those is to be flexible with their external obligations as well. So some of the other issues that came up during the discussions and the survey was affordability and continuing to provide a high level of service to our community members with limited resources. So affordability, a lot of people talked about wanting to maintain the affordability or increase the affordability of living in the community. That's based on, you know, your personal perception of what affordable is. And then another issue-challenge, like I talked about previously, was the recruitment and retention of our staff for the city of Milton. So we are going to have quite a few retirements, specifically in like the Public Works Department coming up soon. So we want to look at that, have a plan for that. But also recruitment is a growing challenge for some of the more specialized positions and even some of the not-so-more specialized positions as well. In the report, I did reference the police officer recruitments that we've done in the past. So I think it was 2012 or 2013, we had over 100 applications for one open police officer position, and almost all of them had gone through the Law Enforcement Academy already. When we did a recruitment in 2018, we had, I think it was mid-20s, around 25 to 30 applications, and only about 10 of those had gone through the Law Enforcement Academy. So it's reduced number of applicants for some of those positions that we need to be aware of and think about ways that we can, we can address that and continue to attract people to want to work for the city of Milton so we can have a high-quality staff. Small business retention was another challenge that was referenced, trying to keep some of those small businesses in our downtowns and other locations for longer periods of time. Two other sections in the survey that we included was communications and equity and inclusion. Communications, we felt like this was a good opportunity to find out what our community wants in terms of communications, but also what our staff wants. So the employees, their major request, I guess, was just more communications in general. So what we started doing is I'm doing a recap email to all of our staff after council meetings to let them know what happened. And I'll do the same thing with the plan-commission meeting that we had tonight. And then just trying to send out communications a little bit more frequently to those staff members. The survey respondents, they said that they preferred communication through email, website, and bi-monthly newsletters. We also discussed a little bit on community events and whether those should appear on our communication outlets, the city-specific communication outlets. We haven't put many community events on those previously because we didn't want to drown out our messages and our specific events. But that might be something that we want to reevaluate in the future because it seemed like there was, there were community members who were interested in finding that information on our channels. So a couple other action items we're doing in 2021, we do, we are going to do a website update. Every four years with our contract with Civic Plus, we can do a website update, so we're due for that. So we'll take the information that we gathered from the various groups and try and make our website a little bit better, a little bit more easy to navigate for, for our community. And then I'm also looking at trying to put together a communications plan so we're a little bit more strategic in how we're communicating and what we're communicating. In terms of the equity and inclusion section, we really wanted to see just what the community thought in terms of that area of where we're at right now in terms of a city. So there was interest from survey respondents to focus future efforts on inclusion and then just in general, bringing the community together. There were some discussions at workshop groups where it's hard to break into the community if you're new to it. So trying to maybe find ways to welcome new community members or something like that. So those are, it's kind of the synopsis, I guess, of the report that I'd sent out. Are there any questions on that at all? It was a lot to just throw at you. Okay. So then, as we move forward, what we're going to do is think about those specific topics and then any goals that we want to come up with. So John Luthy in his book, he talks about how you focus on the issue. You look at whether it's too high, it meets standards, or it's too low, and then we can look to reduce, to maintain, or increase, and then by how much and by when. So that's what we're looking at doing tonight. I appreciated John Luthy kind of putting the whole process into a nice visual for us with a football metaphor. So the goal, that's the goal line, the ultimate destination. Reaching the goal line is maybe three to five years out, or possibly even a decade or more, depending on what that ultimate goal is. And then with the resources available, we determine how far we can go each year. This becomes the annual objective, and the plays to reach each objective are our strategies and actions. So with each play we run or series of plays, we hit an objective, assuming we are successful. And then if we fall short or even exceed our expectations, we can reassess and determine our next plays for the following fiscal year and determine if any changes need to be made to our objectives to keep us on the right path to eventually reach the goal line. So goals, they're issue-driven. He talked about standardizing them by using the word "to" first and then reduce, increase, or maintain. And like I said before, goals should be future-focused, three to five years, a decade, that kind of thing, not just something for next year. And then objectives, continue with "to," and then increase, reduce, or maintain. And these are shorter-term, so quarterly, semi-annually, annual, and then a specific measurement. So an example from the book he used was to reduce the number of personal property crimes occurring in the city. And then an objective would be to reduce from 70% to less than 50% of total reported offenses, the number of personal property crimes occurring in the city by a certain date. So that's a quick overview of everything. I don't know if there are any questions on that.
What did you anticipate us completing tonight?
Well, do we want to start talking about goals tonight? What do we want to have our goals to be? And then if there are specific objectives that the council wants to see, or if the council wants the department heads to look at coming up with specific objectives to meet the goals the council puts forth?
And do we get our goals from the challenges?
The challenges, the strengths, yep, those, that whole report that we put together. Or if there's something that wasn't covered in the report, that's fine, too.
How would you like to start?
Well, if we want to just start a dialogue, if someone has any specific goals that they want to look at or specific topic areas that they want to look at, then maybe we can dive into those topic areas a little bit more.
Okay, I'll take a stab, if that's okay.
Yeah, definitely.
One of our strengths was our park system. And I sent four ideas a while back in for strengthening our park system or making possible improvements. So those could be possible, long-term goals, to do that specifically along the Janesville Street Board. If that's a place to start.
Yeah, and like the overall goal could be strengthening our park system, and then objectives could be certain projects that we want to look at.
Right. Thank you.
Would... Because you wouldn't do, like, parks and then recreation separately? Is that, like, would we do those together? Under a heading?
We could do them together. Recreation for the city of Milton is a little bit different than some other municipalities, just because we don't have a specific recreation department. So we're providing the facilities for recreation, I guess.
So one of the things that I was thinking of is capitalizing on the Ice Age Trail more. I think that there's, there's room to do that. So I wasn't sure if that would fall under parks, or would it be parks and trails, or parks and recreation? So that was, I mean, that would fall under strengthening, but...
Yeah, no, I think you could do one goal that would be strengthening our park-recreation-trail system. And then we could have some different objectives under that, maybe.
Okay, so I'm talking about the Ice Age Trail. I mean, like, that's my idea under that.
And mine would be the Pioneer Park, that I gave it a name for lack of reason. The Pioneer Park being located over here next door to my house for the, on the well property. A small city park that would be named after the pioneers of our community in an appropriate honor or honor of that.
One of, one of the things that I'm hearing is some stuff that sounds like it's almost at the objective level as opposed to the goal level. You know, the goal stuff is still pretty big. And, you know, things, one of the things we talked about before that captures some of what is being said here is creating opportunities for people. Remember, you know, Ashley was talking about educational opportunities, lifelong learning opportunities, and so on. You know, then, you know, if you've got that there, you've got a place for Ice Age Trail, for example. You know, fits really nicely under there. That's one of those opportunities. And so there may be a goal that speaks to opportunities that are lifelong learning opportunities, opportunities that are recreational opportunities, opportunities that are business opportunities. And, you know, then you start to get some alignment with those various different categories we're talking about. But I think there's a big piece there where we can get some kind of alignment into categories that slots, you know, business and recreation and education all into the picture.
So Bill, you could have almost a goal of to increase opportunity in the city. And then underneath that objective of, you know, improve the Ice Age Trail, you know, to improve our park system, things like that. Those could be the objectives underneath.
Yeah, almost, almost what I'm saying is that we might have a theme for our goals that is opportunity. And then, you know, have a separate goal for opportunities that are recreational, opportunities that are business development, opportunities that are educational, and, you know, whatever other categories. So that our goals kind of have a similar piece to it in terms of a similar framework. There may be, you know, some, some things as well that are, you know, we've got the stuff that is, is, is public works. You know, and I don't know whether we want an opportunity to have clean water. We just want clean water. You know what? Don't want an opportunity necessarily to have safety in the community. We want it to be that way. So that, you know, the idea of those separate opportunity strands or alignments doesn't cover everything, but I think it covers several things we're talking about.
So, I think we, what does everybody think about, like, working on this for, like, maybe the next 15 minutes and see how far we get? And then we'll have some time to process this before the next meeting and email Inga with some more goals to make it more concise, so we can just kind of do some brainstorming right now. And then Inga can kind of summarize it for our next meeting and then kind of drill down on it a little bit more. What do you guys think about that? Just a nod of the head? If that's okay. Because I like the ideas. I also think, like, we could actually do this for two hours, and I don't, I don't, I don't know that we all want to do that for two hours. But Bill, on your, I was thinking, like, when you were talking, like, the opportunities are almost... So we talked about increase, maintain, and decrease. Are we thinking, like, maybe opportunity would be, would replace, like, increase? Is that, I, I'm just trying to make myself understand.
I mean, we can, you know, we can quantify these as well. We can, you know, we can increase lifelong opportunities or lifelong learning opportunities and then, you know, get more specific in the objectives as far as, you know, how are we doing that? Is it more people that we want to be involved? Is it the same number of people, but at a deeper, you know, kind of a level? You know, we can get to that at the objective, but I don't think that these opportunity things can't have increase, maintain. Maintain might be a really good one as far as some of the infrastructure stuff, for example. You know, we have safe water. And so, you know, maintaining the high level of, of public safety might be, you know, another one where maintain is, is good. We probably do want to increase recreational opportunities in keeping with some of the stuff that we said in terms of our, our vision.
Based on that, one of the things that I, go ahead, Linda, I'm sorry. I cut you off.
Who?
I cut Linda off. She put her hand.
Oh, did you? Oh, I wasn't even looking at Linda.
I was just going to say, and I don't know where you want to put this on the list, but I'm going to add to the specifics that we've been talking to. The Ice Age Trail and park and out on Janesville Street. I would like to have a goal that we, as a city, recognize the prairie at Crossridge because of our Prairie de Lac name that the area was originally given, and also because it's the last green space before Janesville comes. And so I just feel like we need to really enhance it. And it, we already have it in that learning field. We do that with our prairie seed collections. We, you know, the, the park end, the recreation end, you know, we really pretty much have everything that has, everything that's been talked about to point. But there's so many things that we could continue to do, but not just in this entrance. Um, the other entrances too, Highway fifty-nine coming in there. Um, you know, we have some very nice things that that I just feel like we could improve. But I do want to throw that in there for Cross Ridge because it is a thirty-five acre city park. It's not the school park, it's our city park, our passive city park. And we have people over here on this side of town that use it a lot and that would like to use more of it. So I really would like to make that a a goal, objective, however you want to put it.
And I think that actually fits best as an objective because it's a specific thing. Uh, all the ideas, kind of those ideas of the different parks, Ice Age Trail seem like objectives that go with a larger goal. And the idea, and I think we need to come up with the goal that fits under. And I think it's good for us to maybe focus on goals rather than objectives right now, so we can figure out what our goals are and then work down to objectives. But I think that those kind of suggestions all can might help come up with a single goal that can encompass them. Then I kind of want to add that I think we should have a goal of maintaining small, our small-town feel. Is a completely separate topic.
We want all of the topics that we can get to.
Throw it out there, I think that could be one of our other goals is maintain small-town feel.
Devin?
Um, kind of, kind of branching off Ryan's idea with the small-town feel. Um, just a goal to make everyone feel welcome. Um, it was kind of baffling in my mind to look at the survey and real, or come to the reality that people don't feel comfortable in the community and I want to change that.
You know, and that's something that's uh come up multiple times in various venues and conversations that Al and I have participated in. So it's legitimate, like, it's not just one family or, you know, it's a, it's a theme. It is a theme.
Um.
Teresa, and then Larry will get back to you.
Good.
I mean, Teresa, go, and then Larry will get back to you.
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't. When I had looked at all of the data that towards the end of this, under equity and uh inclusion, it just kept coming out to me that one of the goals should be to promote equity and inclusion. And under, you know, to, you could either say to increase equity and inclusion and to look at all of the data and helping people feel welcome, promoting uh respect with community members, uh helping community members feel uh feel that they're treated fairly and different, you know, looking at each of these items that they were being assessed with. Uh, some of that shows that many of them, if you look at many, almost seventy-five percent of them feel less than excellent. Or, you know, that's significant in a town this small, that they are not felt treated better. Um, so that would be my suggestion.
I think we can incorporate equity, like, the lens of equity and inclusion in all of our objectives, you know, and and our goals like that should be like just inherent.
As long as we make sure that we're doing it, not not that it's just under the under the table. I want to make sure.
Okay, there's a focus on it and it's intentional and it's just not like, oh, and and equity and inclusion. It shouldn't be the and, it should be kind of the lens that everything gets framed through.
Yes.
Larry and Ashley had something in the in the chat that I'll have Inga talk about and that after Larry goes.
I I coming off of Teresa's a little bit, but related. Uh, I think we want to keep in mind broadening or strengthening our breadth of housing options for people in our community. Uh, I'm worried, I'll give a perfect example, myself, my wife. Yeah, as we age, even though we're living with our daughter, uh, the issue of how long can you stay in our community? And what other housing options are available as income changes as you grow older? And my neighbor lady is another perfect example. She's seventy-eight years old and her taxes have increased over time, of course, everyone's adds. And she's asking me several times, how long can I stay in my home? Uh, because of the cost of things. So I think if we're looking at inclusion and equity, we want to make sure we we have a program of these goals uh or an objective to try to encourage uh the maintenance of middle-income housing, if I can use that term, uh versus the high-end housing.
Maybe it would be to have um housing available for all phases of life or something like that?
Yeah.
And based on some measurable term, I, you know, that's a look at what that means exactly, but uh. I I wanted to be quality housing, but I wanted to be affordable.
Ashley, did you want to talk about becoming a visible assets, objectives, or to create a marketing planning and increase social media presence? Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Well, I was sharing, I think everybody has some great ideas, but I think I was just sharing how we kind of have ours in steps, so we have the kind of the broad goal. That I think that's what Inga's searching for and then how we're going to reach that goal. So I just thought I would put in writing of how what, how ours is looking at. So we can kind of get our thoughts, I guess, in order of what our goals are going to be.
So, what, Inga, I have a question for you. So when cities do this, like typically, how many goals do we work on?
I'm I'm looking for like six. I don't know that I want to go more than that because under each goal, you're going to have objectives. And if we have twenty goals and then under each goal, there's five objectives that it doesn't seem like that's going to be something that we're going to be successful in executing with our um limited staff and everything right now.
Yeah, and that's even higher than what I thought. So, okay, six. So no more than six, maybe less.
Yeah, I I think six is um manageable and if we, less than that's great too.
Do you have some examples of goals that cities have come up with where maybe some of the the um topics that we've discussed tonight might, like, how that might fit just as an example? I I know, I think we're doing a great job brainstorming, but it'll be something for us to continue to think about in the next uh couple of weeks is.
Yeah.
Like, we would wrap this up at six forty-five, but um.
Yep, um, I, so like the the city of Beloit, that's just the one I keep pulling up. Um, one of their goals is create and sustain safe and healthy neighborhoods. Um, create and sustain a high-performing organization. Create and sustain economic and residential growth. So that's kind of their their format. We don't have to use to and then increase, decrease or maintain. That's an option. We can structure the goals however the council feels most comfortable, I guess. So if everyone wants to take some time over the next two weeks, think about it. Um. And then email me maybe your your top six goals that you're looking for or ideas and then I take it back. If you guys could do that for me by next Tuesday, and then I'll take that information and put it together and see what it looks like. And then we can talk more about it the following Tuesday.
And then just for uh clarification for me, like, uh, do the employees do that? Or is is the rest of the strategic planning council focused?
It.
Funny, funny you should ask. Uh, cause I was having a conversation earlier this week about um something that we've uh used with libraries before. It's called balanced scorecard planning that looks at things in a variety of ways. But one of the typical things that follows the balanced scorecard stuff um is trying to get the plan so that it really is scalable. In other words, that people in the various departments, that people in in public works can kind of look at 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 a visual, maybe a one-page visual of of the plan and kind of understand, that's where I fit. Um, you know, that's that, that's my job there. And it really is part of my job to somehow contribute to this this bigger picture. Um, and I think part of that um is, um, you know, once we set the 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 broad goals, um, you know, some of those objectives, I think, are going to be pretty oriented towards departmental stuff. And, um, you know, at that point, I think we need to get uh the departments involved. Um, and, um, you know, the the library is a good example. I I can't foresee that um every one of the goals is necessarily going to be a good fit with the library, but I'll bet that some of them are. And um, so it's an idea that, um, you know, library folks are going to be able to look at this and say, okay, that's, that's, that's how we fit into things. So as we go along, um, one of the things that uh Inga and I discussed was perhaps doing a a little thing for um the city council about these strategy maps and what they would look like. Because they're good for communicating. She's got a great brochure um that she pulled up really quickly that that is about strategy maps. Maybe we can share that with um the entire council. Um, the neat thing is, in a very succinct way, you've got a document that can be used both with staff and with the public um to help communicate what the plan is all about.
So we would kind of get into that after we do goals and objectives?
Yeah.
Oh, you're muted. Bill.
I I think at least the goals come first. And I think the goals, I think, are going to be pretty heavily city council-driven. Um, but, uh, you know, as we get into the objectives, I think we get down, drill more down to the 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 individuals. You know, there's a tendency, uh, I'll I'll give you a, you know, the library world obviously is the one that I know the best. But there's a really good example from libraries. When you start doing planning, somebody is going to say, we need a bigger parking lot. There's our goal, you know, big parking lot. Well, the question is, why do you want a big parking lot? Um, you know, is it, you want a big parking lot because people get turned away from programs or people drive up and there's no place to park, you know, within half a mile? And so they don't go to the program that i- is there? So you want the parking lot to kind of support that higher-level thing that you want to have happen. Same is true with, um, you know, the the uh park situation that Linda mentioned. You know, you want the park there to serve that higher-level goal in terms of that recreation that adds to the quality of life in the community.
The the other thing that I'm thinking about too is there should, like, there should be a role, an active role, action steps for how the city council fits into this, right? So it's like we can have goals and objectives and um and then kind of drill that down to departments and how they fit in. But I also think, like, there should be a role for council and committees too, maybe? Because I think we should be actively engaged in implementing the strategic plan. So I mean, I know that's just like adding another thing to think about. But I do think it's important be that we are an active council, that we don't just promote policies and assign work out, that we're, that we're a full team, or, you know, and a partner in um executing the strategic planning, finding goals, objectives. It goes that in the book? So those are kind of my thoughts. So do you think you have have enough for right now and then we can think about, do you? I'm just wondering, Inga, if you would be able to just do a summary of what we talked about and send that out in an email for us to work from by Tuesday? Could you do that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And then maybe it would be helpful, not that we're looking to copy Beloit's, but, you know, to send some examples of goals. Cause it is somewhat of a nebulous term and I agree with a lot of the conversation that's taken place tonight. Those are great ideas. Uh, but, you know, when you hear Inga read those goals that, for example, Beloit had, um, you know, those are, those are big overarching concepts. And and then how to effectuate those goals. It was, it was a lot of the things that we talked about tonight. And, you know, and I agree that the staff absolutely plays a role in that. Um, we're not all experts in everything everybody does. Uh, so we would need to drill down to the experts to say, okay, if we want to, um, you know, using that Beloit example, create and maintain, uh, you know, a diverse housing stock. What does that mean? How do we effectuate that? What kind of policies, what may we, what kind of ordinances may we need to change? Um, you know, the council's not going to have that that kind of understanding. Um, even Howie and I would probably have to go through and and, you know, really look at it and and, uh, you know, some of those things we might not be able to answer even, but uh, but, you know, there's, there's a role for all of us in the process. But I think having those examples would be helpful, uh, so we don't kind of get lost in the in the, in the step five of the process when we're still at step one.
Yeah.
And then, so I I just want to recap, then, council should submit ideas, thoughts to you by the day after Labor Day.
Yes.
Okay. So you know what you're doing on Labor Day then?
And and even if it's a not necessarily a goal, but if it's maybe more of like an objective or something, but it's something that's important to you, you can still send it to me to include because maybe it will fit under whatever we determine are those ultimate goals. So we'd, we'd want to capture that too, I think. So don't, don't get bogged down, I guess, at this point of whether it's a goal, objective, strategy or action. We can sort through all that, just what those big ideas are that that you want to do or address and then send those to me and then, like I said, we'll, we'll sort them out.
Yeah, I think that's really important because you can back into goals in in some ways. In other words, you know, we really know that we want to do this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, what goal does that fit on? We don't have a goal that fits that. So we need to either broaden one of the goals that we've got or create a new goal so that we can, you know, fit that particular important objective uh and and make it part of our plan.
Yeah, and and I think we did that really well with um the the creation of the values that we did. We had different ideas, concepts, words that we fit into um overarching values for the organization. So I think if we use that same process during this piece of the process, then I think, I I think that'll work fairly well for us. Before we move off of strategic planning, I did just want to go over the mission, vision and values one more time with the council, make sure there aren't any questions or concerns on it. And if there are, then we can address those briefly, I guess, and then um hopefully have that kind of set in stone. Does that work for everybody?
Yep, let's do it.
Okay. So, um, once again, this is the mission. The city of Milton provides quality services to meet the needs of all community members and to cultivate a safe, diverse and inclusive city in which people are proud to live. Does that work for everybody?
Beautiful.
Okay. So then the vision, I'm not going to read this to you because that's a lot more text. Um, I I believe I sent this out to everybody, though, in a Word format or PDF format for you to review ahead of the meeting. So I just didn't know if there were any concerns, questions, punctuation missing, anything like that. Good? I can't tell if people are still reading or just looking at the screen.
Anybody have anything? I think it's good.
Okay, and then I had to split the values up. So values are integrity, professionalism on this. So values are integrity, professionalism on this.
I think that also looks good.
Okay. And then inclusive, fiscally responsible and creative are the final values.
And Inga, that creative is there as a value?
Yes.
That's why I really liked Beloit's beginning with create. Create and increase, create and maintain. It, it says we're forward thinking, we're not sitting back and waiting for things to happen. We're looking at that kind of thing.
I think we did marvelous work.
I think so. So pat yourselves on the back, guys. Okay. So nothing else with this then? Okay.
I'm good. All right. So do you feel like we got enough accomplished tonight, Inga?
I think so. And then I'll send out, I don't know, an, an instructions email of what I'm expecting for next week. It's like virtual learning, guys. You get a weekly email from me with stuff.
And you're going to be graded. You're going to be graded. Although we shouldn't let Teresa do the grading. She'll probably be really tough on us.
I was thinking we should make Markey do it.
Markey. So Markey doesn't have anything to do but grade our papers.
Inga, you've done a very nice job of drawing in so many people's ideas. So.
Thank you. And did the report make sense for everybody? There weren't any questions on that at all? Okay.
Very good.
Okay. Good job. This counts as team building, FYI. General items. Does anybody have any general items? Okay, committee reports. Is there any committee reports? We'll move right along to staff reports. Ashley?
We had our food truck rally this past weekend. I think it went very well. I hope some of you were able to come out and stand in long lines to get some food. Couple of the trucks ran out of food, so that's really good. We have extended an offer to somebody for our open position, so hopefully we'll have that person starting soon. And Cassie did put in her two weeks, so we will be looking for another employee at the library, but that's it.
Thank you, Ashley. Um, Howard?
Howie, you're muted.
He said I'll pass, so.
No, they're, they're going to do some seal coating in the city the next couple of days on some streets. Rainbow Park View and some of the smaller ones. The library wall on the back got started today. So that hopefully is finished by, you know, end of the, end of this week. Otherwise butterflies up at the library. Ashley. And otherwise it's just, besides that, just, you know, mostly just the regular stuff. Mark will probably tell you how they're doing on the sewer out on North Janesville Street, so.
Okay, Mark, Markey, Markey called you out, so.
Yeah, so Janesville Street's moving along. They're about a third of the way through the project construction. He's still going to be probably end of September before it's totally wrapped up, I would guess. We've got the bids for the concrete pavement repairs on Madison Avenue and Janesville Street coming in next week. So we'll see where those numbers come in at. And other than that, chip ceiling, capital improvements stuff, planning.
Mark, the ramp looks real nice by the library, don't you think? I think they did a good job on that ramp.
Yeah, they, uh, we made sure that was installed per ADA requirements, so. Yeah, they, they had to adjust the forms once after they thought they were good, but I think we're in good shape now, so.
Are we still picking up tree, trees, tree, all that?
The next, we did pick them up from a couple of the storms and now the next collection starts right after Labor Day. So if they're on the terrace, they're okay just to set, but, but we have the next collection is right after Labor Day. And then there's one in October and one in November also.
Chief? Police chief.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying. Never know who else is on the call with rank, I guess. I don't really have any updates. Today was the first day of school and all of the things that that comes with for the police department, but I was out today. So I have not seen a report yet on how the first day went. I'll get that report tomorrow. But I didn't get any panicked phone calls or emails as well, so that's a good sign. Working on filling a couple of crossing guard vacancies. So we have a couple of spots that we're trying to cover between schools. They have police department staff right now until we get those ready to go. And that's all I got for update today.
Thank you very much. Inga, do you have anything?
I don't think so.
Did you talk enough?
Yeah, I did.
I don't have, I don't have anything that we didn't already cover.
Al?
Well, we've kind of talked about a lot of it, but we've had a lot of conversations about the future, obviously with strategic planning, but with the vacancies that Ashley has in the library, talking about, you know, the future there. With the vacancy, the upcoming vacancies that Howie will see in public works, talked a lot about the future there. So really kind of the last couple of weeks have been forward thinking and we'll talk more about that in the next agenda item. But, you know, tying back to the strategic plan, it's, it's a good time to have those conversations. There's never a good time to have them, but if you're going to have one right now, seems to be okay.
All right.
But Howie agreed to stay for seven more years, so.
Oh my God, how much did that cost us?
You don't want to.
All right. Um, so we're going to go into closed session now. And Bill, I'm not sure if we've gone into closed session since you've been council president. Typically, the council president reads a motion. And do you have that wording from the agenda in front of you? And I'm not rushing you.
Yeah, I would move that we convene in closed session pursuant to section 1952 sub 1E. The Wisconsin statutes considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And the topic is the Department of Public Works reorganization.
I get that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Want to oppose? Okay, we're going to be moving into the conference room now.
Yes, normally we would, normally we would get up and walk into another room.
Wait, Mark, I saw him.
Just, just to clarify for the record, the, the statutory exception, I think that's just a typo, is, is section 19.85 sub 1, sub E, okay?
Okay.
I'll have to, we have a list of exceptions in the agenda folder, so I'll have to.
My motion refers to section 19.85 sub 1, sub E.
And does Ryan's second also refer to that? Okay.
Yep.
Everybody in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. Marcus, are we good to go?
Right, I was distracted there for a minute. So that was a roll call vote and everybody approved, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, then you're good.
We're back in open session.
We're back in session and we don't have any actions that we need to take. Our next meeting will be September 15th, 2020. And is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We're adjourned. And I just want to remind everybody that you do have homework. Is it through like midnight on Tuesday or 11:59?
8:00 AM on Tuesday.
8:00 AM on Tuesday.
I like it. I like it.
I'll get mine in at 7:59 and 30 seconds. All right, so some of you will see at the fire department thing Thursday. The rest of you have a safe and enjoyable Labor Day and stay safe out there.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Everyone.